I'd like to call to order the committee of the whole meeting for September thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-two at five oh six P M. Tenants roll call.
Elder persons Wolf?
Here.
Terrence?
Here.
Hamel?
Here.
Kapusta?
Here.
Schrader?
Here.
Kabahaki?
Here.
Sorry. Madden?
Here.
We have a quorum present.
Thank you. Statement of public notice?
This meeting was noticed in accordance with the public meeting law.
Thank you. Approval of the agenda?
Move to approve.
Second discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Approval of the minutes from July twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-two.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. New business, two thousand and twenty-three capital projects fund budgets, starting with Public Works. Scott, how are you doing?
Good. How's everyone doing tonight?
Good.
All right. We're going to start with the planning division. One moment.
Yep.
Is anyone at this end okay? I think we're set.
Okay. We're going to start page thirty-seven. Planning Division, entrance signs with club groups. What we're looking at is on our entrance to four of our locations of the city, we have various groups off the side. Some of them are not even up to date. This was a suggestion brought to me by the mayor that we somehow incorporate some of these entrance signs with our groups. We don't know what it's going to look like. We kind of looked at maybe doing some polls and with banners. But this is one of the projects that we were looking to do, just to kind of enhance the social kind of aspect of the city.
So I'm sure you guys realize as you pull in, like say, coming in on Racine Avenue off, buried down in the ditch, after clapidated and everything, it has all the service organizations with what their logos looks like in nineteen seventy.
Yep.
Not what they currently are. Some of these clubs don't even exist. If we went to this, I would just say take it down altogether because I think it detracts the way it is right now, but I think we'd get pushback from these clubs. I think we should recognize them, and I think there's a classy way we can do that and kind of make it look inviting for coming into the community. I have no idea what to call it. We're just kind of putting a place marker in there right now. I'll bring this back to committee of the whole once we have designs and let you guys weigh in on that, but I think it's something that we can work on in the next year. Thoughts, questions?
Well, just looking at it, twelve thousand five hundreds per sign seems like a lot. I don't know what it is because we don't have, we didn't get any bids or estimates yet. Is that correct? Is that what just?
We don't even have a concept yet. So again, hitting the sign and the concept, there could be everything, like I said, of like, think of doing two flag poles and then kind of doing banners on the side, and the banners would be nice because then you can take off the banner, adjust them if needed. A typical banner, and I'm not going to say you probably have, it's very minimal cost. It's mostly maybe the two poles. But we can always give you, provide you plenty of two or three options, but our goal is not to be more than this cost because otherwise I would not present it to you. I'm not going to present you a design that's going to be more expensive than what we budgeted for.
And you'll approve the final price tag on it, but for budgeting purposes, we have to put something in.
And this is all on Racine Avenue, all four signs?
Um, no. So right now, the two, yeah, the two on Racine Avenue to start with, and then the two on Janesville.
On Janesville. And if we take them down, what's our consequence by taking them down and not replacing them?
Pushback?
From?
The groups that service our community.
To me, it seems like more of a want than a need and a little bit of an extravagance.
Not going to affect your budget. I'll put it in there until you spend it, so.
Yeah. The question is, would it go be better used someplace else, I guess?
You can, why don't you let us do some research and show you what the cost comes to at that point? I would approve this. We're not spending it.
Right.
Until it comes back to you guys, but I, you know, we got to put something in here. You can approve, you can say at the end when it comes forward, no, I don't want to spend that, but it's easier to do it this way than come forward with a concept once we do our research and then ask you for money outside of the budget and then have to do budget amendments and everything else.
And where is this money coming from?
Landfill.
Landfill? Hmm. So is this a benefit for landfill money?
I think it's a great idea that we start promoting the great things in the city. We haven't done that for too long.
All these groups and organizations do add a lot to the city, and this is the only way that we honor them in public. I think it's good use of landfill.
I think it's an exaggerated number, but that's fine because you got to start something.
But the problem with that is that we always say yes to this, and then we get to the final budget, and then nobody wants to take anything out.
Well, if you're going to look at things in this capital budget to pull out, I wouldn't start here. There's other things.
I'm just saying, but all these little things add up. I mean, you know, that's, it's a good question to question it, I think. I guess we can see what it looks like.
Well, the good thing is it would be coming out of landfill money, and that doesn't cost the city anything.
There is, by doing this the way I'm envisioning it, which I haven't fully gone through, but I'm thinking some kind of structure with like pole banners, which a lot of communities use, go through New Berlin, they are honoring their police and fire all the way up and down National Avenue and things like that. We can do our service organizations and then, you know, we can pull out stuff for seasonal stuff, we can pull out stuff for, you know, you know, two thousand and twenty-two safest city of the year, that type of stuff. I mean, we're just promoting ourselves.
So when you say pole banner, something like what's on Janesville now that?
Similar to that, but I'm thinking more of a mast instead of having like, one is on Janesville, have a single pole, one on each side on it. I'm trying to see if there's something where you can have multiples going up and maybe in just, I don't want to say too much because I may be way off base on here, but one of the things I'm thinking of is like the welcome to Meskego sign that's there, like just past it have a pole that has this thing higher up in the air that would have like, say, five on each side or something like that. I'm not sure, I'd have, we got to work through this yet.
So it's the next step, lighting?
Well, that's the good thing about if we do with these banners, it's one light in the ground that goes straight up. So we're ready to power at these things for the existing signs. Again, all this stuff can be dissected when we have something brought forward, but I mean, you can always kick it down the road and say we don't want it. You could always say you don't want to do anything with it right now. I just think what we have there right now is ugly.
It's good to upgrade once in a while.
What was that?
I said it's good to upgrade once in a while.
Consensus?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Next.
All right. Moving on, page thirty-eight. So a couple of people have come and talked to us, the light pole painting on Janesville Road. I'm sure all of you are aware of it, that it is, something's happening to the poles out there. Our best bet, we kind of looked at it, what we would do is over four years, we'd take about twenty-six poles down. We know how to take them down, we have to have electrician, we take them to our DPWR, DPWR, and then we powder coat on there and then bring them back. So we worked through a process to try to get it as cheaply as possible. The other thing too is from logistic reasons, we have to break it down. It's not really easy, lots of traffic to take one down, powder coat it and bring it back. The other thing is we are hoping to try to do this once this fall so we can have a winter time where it goes through winter and test this out. I don't want to just do this without not testing it, but we have to give you a cost for it, and it's been on Facebook. I think you're all aware that the poles are rusting.
Didn't we repaint these poles?
Yes.
Yes.
So.
That wasn't that long ago.
Correct, and it made it worse.
And we did a library as well, right?
The library is a separate issue. This is a, just the Janesville Road. Probably three years ago, there was an issue with them. We had the manufacturer come back, they hired a person, they did this kind of grinding down and repainted it. I'll be honest with you, it made it worse. It actually made it worse.
So the manufacturers backed that and paid for that?
They paid for the first one, they're done, they're gone.
Even if they did it wrong?
They're, 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 they're gone. We have no more rights with them or anything, so.
I just, I just knew we did this not that long ago, that's why.
I could have told you, I wasn't around then, but I knew that wouldn't work. You can't take a metal pole that's outside and just repaint it. It's either got to be electrostatically or it's got to.
That's how they send them, yeah. Powder painted.
Yeah.
How many poles we got to do, Scott?
What?
How many poles do we have to do?
Uh, it says a hundred and four.
Okay.
Yeah, well, for your test, you want to do one?
Yep.
Or just one? Just one.
Okay.
You can easily take one down, power, get it up there. I'd love for it to go through a whole winter.
Mm-hmm.
Kind of see.
That's good.
See how it goes.
So you guys powder paint yourself? Do we have a powder paint?
No, we wouldn't do it ourselves. We hire someone, but we have to have a place to do it, so it's cheaper for us to take it just to our yard and send it to take it somewhere else.
And then they take it from there?
Yeah.
Okay. I was wondering how we're going to.
No, no, we are not doing, our job is to work with an electrician, get it down, we haul it back, we get it to our place and let them do the work. We are trying to keep the cost down as much as we can by doing as much as at our facility.
My fear is if we don't address this, they rust through and they start falling.
Well, eventually it'll get bad, yeah.
Yeah.
I guess the moral of the story is next time buy poles that.
Buy, don't, don't buy the cheapest thing.
Don't buy painted poles. Or buy black ones, you can't see the rust on them.
Consensus?
Sure.
Yep.
Next item.
Okay. Next item, page thirty-nine. So this is something that I started and brought to you last year, and now we're here. So our road program, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. In the last probably month since we are doing our road program, I have gotten at least five to ten calls. I've got, I'm sure you have, when is my road going to be done? The cost of roads is going up, our budget hasn't changed since I've been here now, which is going on five and a half years. In a way to catch up, we would like to do a million dollars every three years to kind of catch up. Right now, I have a map showing you the number of two to threes, which are kind of our lowest rated roads, and we still have a lot of them to do. So this is our plan, and what would it do is for next year, we would be bidding out one point seven hundred and fifty thousand, or one point seven million dollars, and that would hopefully get us better bids, more competition from contractors.
So what does it mean when there's weeds growing in the cracks in the road?
I'm guessing you're, are you sure, it means there's a crack and there's weeds growing through it, I guess.
Well, I'm guessing we need a lot of roads done, right? We had four hundred thousand dollars left last year on the road program. What do we do with that money?
We did not have four hundred thousand.
Didn't we come in under budget on Hillenale Road reconstruction? So what do we do with that money? I do not know. So that four hundred thousand could have went back into the roads during this current period.
Sharon, you want to address that?
I mean, we raised taxes and we ended up with four hundred grand extra.
Sharon, can you?
I don't think it's on either. Road project that we have. Was it a bridge? Push up towards you.
I don't know, but that's a capital project, so I don't know if I can take the capital and go into the road program for operating. That's the only thing, but we didn't ever, I don't know whether it went.
Yeah, we did have another road project or bridge project in the capital expenditure fund, so we transferred that, the money actually was transferred from landfill, a portion of it on top of the borrowing, and we transferred it back to the landfill, any excess. So there was, the money's not sitting there, it was either reimbursed to the landfill account or it was expended on another capital road project.
The only thing I can think of is Old Loomis Road.
It may have been the bridge, yeah.
Old Loomis Road Bridge, remember?
Yeah.
We had a little emergency kind of repair, and it was like, hey, are we going to be safe or not? And we came in, we did it really quick. That's the length of project I can think of that we used it for, and that bridge was kind of falling down, and I think I showed you those pictures of the steel, so we did use that to repair that bridge.
And I'll run a report for you and send it out to you next week.
But typically to answer your greater question, when we come in under budget on any of the items for capital, it could, most of these sources are landfills, so we just rolled it back into the landfill fund, and it's reused the next year in capital for whatever the capital items are. So it's not, it's not like we borrowed the money and then we're going to use it for, it just goes back to its initial source.
No, I was just bringing it up because if we're adding an extra billion in, we're only adding six hundred thousand in, I mean, we could have used that money on the roads already that need to be done, and, you know, I get a lot of phone calls and a lot of complaints in my area about roads, and I don't know what the roads are everywhere because I don't go down all the streets, but I can tell you.
You have a couple twos and threes.
There's, there's some, and there's some big roads going through that are going to cost a lot of money, you know? You run through like a Kipling or something straight through, you know, that's a long road. That's going to be an expensive venture, so that's why I'm bringing this up, because that's a, that's a lot of money to roll into a fund when we maybe could have did major patching or something with that. I don't know. I'm just bringing it up.
So the other thing is when we do put the road program out there every year, we put the roads that we want to do, we bid them, we also do alternates at the time, hoping that they come in less, and when they come in less, so if our original plan was we thought we could get, say, ten miles of road, and it come on, come under, we don't just do the ten miles, we do twelve miles or whatever. So we maximize that program every year based on what market conditions are.
No, I just wanted to bring it up just to see where we are.
Well, and that's why we're here, because we do realize that we're not keeping up with our roads, so we.
Yeah, and I know I've been on Scott's side for years and trying to get this budget increased here, so.
Any further questions or comments or, so any comments on the funding source on it? So one of the things we have listed in here, because we just had to put something down, we don't have landfill funds for this because we would deplete them, so it's listed as general obligation borrowing. Sharon and I talked about this, and instead of doing general obligation borrowing, we do have fund balance and other accounts that I would rather if we borrowed from ourself, so we would take it out, take it from other funds and then pay it back over a period of time from operating essentially to do our, we do our debt service but be paying ourselves that way we're not paying interest on it. Any objections to that?
That's not for this program, that's for this?
Yes, that would be for this.
Oh, the general obligation? Oh, I see that, okay. I just looked at the landfill, I just carried it down, okay. I got you.
But if there were money that was pushed back into landfill from any excess, we would use that first, I'm assuming?
We could. Yep.
Well, we used some of that on the bridge, I don't know what that bridge cost, I thought it was like a couple hundred thousand dollars, but I might be wrong.
I think it was like two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah, that money is already being utilized in this capital, two thousand and twenty-three budget.
Previous, but like at the end of the year, if there's money left and it just rolls back in there and then we use it to get next to it, it's kind of a borrowing pot type of thing.
I did see it looked like we have a lot of landfill money being used, and I was like, how do we get all this money? Maybe I'm wrong, but it seemed like we have, we have a lot of money.
That's where it came from, the prior, the prior year.
More than normal.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep.
Consensus?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Moving on to the next one, page forty. So again, this is five-year planning, Hillenale Drive. Okay, so Hillenale Drive, it's a bad road. So what we looked at was splitting it up from Field to Racine.
West of Racine, yeah.
Yep.
That's me.
Racine. From Field to Racine, we really need to reconstruct that road. Now, how are we trying to do this? So they passed a bipartisan infrastructure law, B I L. So we did an application to see whether or not we could get this application. Now, again, it's supposed to be a hundred percent would be design, they're saying eighty percent was dot twenty percent municipality. It'd be going through their local program, kind of like how we did Moreland Road a couple years ago. Again, why we have to put this on there is we have to show that we are willing to do this. Again, our application is in, but we haven't heard back from anyone, and the year that we could start this would be two thousand and twenty-four would be for the design. Now, when you take federal money, you take things like, you have to do environmental document, historical document. This will have a trail on the north side of the road. It won't, we were not going to put a bike lane on the road, but we need to put a trail on there. Things that do hurt against us, one, it's not as much traffic as you would like Moreland was because we get rated on certain things. The other thing that does hurt us, and I want to make sure, is when we didn't put a trail on the other portion of Hillenale to the school, if you have one to the school and you have this trail, it really adds up for a lot of points. There's, it's all based off of a point system. But I'm just going to let you know, this is our space of when we would do it. This is like, we had to provide cost estimates, so these are pretty solid costs that we had to look at for the design. Okay?
Is there a trail on Racine there, or no, we didn't go that far down?
No, no.
Okay.
So it would be on the north side of the road.
Yeah, I understand.
So the, the, the north side of the road is the quarry?
No. No, no. We're talking, we're talking Hillenale from Racine going down to Field. And the one with the reconstruction is that field, that intersection would probably get reconstructed. I think if everyone's driven it, it's kind of unsafe, so that's why, and that portion would be reconstructed, and then from Field all the way down to Janesville Road, we just do that as part of the road program instead of a full reconstruction. I think that's the best way to use the funds that we have. Again, this is not guaranteed. I could come back to you in a year and say, guess what, we didn't get this, and you might be like, yeah, we're not going to do this, or we're going to figure out another thing. But this is one of the methods that we try to use our funding source for.
So based on that point system, what's the likelihood that we will get the money?
I don't know.
Five, ten percent?
Really?
What?
I, we're, it's a tough thing. We are also considered part of South Eastern Wisconsin Regional Planning Committee, so when we do and get some of these and we go after, we're going after city, Milwaukee and us are comparable. So who has more traffic? Who has worse roads? Who has more things? So it's a very tough sell for us. It's not just us, Wind Lake is considered part of South Eastern Wisconsin Regional Planning Committee. We're all fighting for the same dollars, so.
So do we have an alternate road that we would do if we decide not to do this one?
No, this is, this is our best opportunity because it has the most traffic and it has like the worst situation, it hasn't been done in so many years, so you're getting more points for as many.
No, I mean, not, not on the program, on our own program. Do we have, so if we decided we don't want to spend two point two, we want to spend a million on a different road, do we have a?
A backup?
Yeah.
Well, I do have a backup on the next page.
I didn't know if that was a backup or a.
Nope, that's a backup if we wanted to, to discuss it.
Okay. So you'll go out for bid on it, that's my point.
Yeah, oh yeah, this is all, this is all through the DOT process, guys. We have to follow the DOT.
But I mean, the alternate, you're going out for bid too.
Well, I'll talk to you about the alternate.
Okay.
Okay? So the next one that we do have, it's called Candlewood subdivision. That's on page forty-one. So Candlewood subdivision, we cannot go and use B I L funds, we will never win it. It's a subdivision, there's no traffic, there's nothing. However, if anyone's driven it, it was constructed with fly ash, and the problem is you need to really take out the entire base and the entire pavement. You would probably keep the curb and gutter, you keep all the storm sewer, and it's a very expensive cost to do. You can't just do road program for this.
And how old is that road?
It's not that old. It's not that very old. It really isn't.
And the reason I bring it up is that's the complaint I keep hearing, is I see the newer areas keep getting new roads and the older areas haven't, and like I said, some of my roads are twenty-five years old, and they were barely resurfaced back then, so that's, I just bring it up as a point.
You can't resurface, this can't be part of the road program, it won't stop what's happening.
But I'm just letting you know what I keep hearing, so.
Yep. Again, we can push this out, again, it gets better during the summertime, worse during the wintertime, but I have to make you aware that sooner or later we got to do something, Okay. We are now moving on to page forty-two, and we are now doing D P W stuff. Any other questions that you guys had on those last two? Again, it's future stuff. Okay. Again, this is our typical D P W schedule pickup truck replacement. In two thousand and twenty-three, we are looking to do a half-ton pickup.
Have you had any luck talking to the dealerships about the, with the pickup trucks doing a quick turnaround on those?
I have not.
Okay. One of the things I'm, we're going to be looking at, so how often, how long do we keep our trucks right now?
Our oldest. Our oldest right now that's still in service is a ninety-nine, just because of our maintenance program. So as we go through, we're in about a ten to fifteen-year turnaround.
So one of the things we're going to look at, and I'm not sure if it'll work or not, but it seems to make some sense, especially on the like, the, just the regular patrol trucks, would be to turn them almost every year, because our state discount on what we get, they're worth more in trade-in than we paid for them.
Now, are these, do these have to be like one-fifties or bigger?
This is just half-tons, like a one-fifty or fifteen-hundred, depending on your brand.
Are we using them because they're one-fifties or can we use a smaller, because there's a lot of newer hybrid, if you want to flip them every year, they're a lot less money.
Yeah.
There are four doors with a bed in the back.
But we're not looking at the less money part of it as the value of the residual value, and I don't want to muddy the waters here in here because we're not sure we're going to do that for sure, but it's just, I'm just letting you know it's something I'm going to be looking at.
Something I was going to bring up anyway, but.
That, you know, if, the most popular truck out there is a Ford F-one-fifty or fifteen-hundred GMC, the value on those just in the used market because they're so popular is so high, and our state discount is so decent that literally it'd be like the Harley, you know, discount where you actually make money on selling them every year. So instead of holding them for.
Hopefully that doesn't last forever.
Instead of holding them for ten years and trying to maximize it, it might make sense just to trade them in every year and trade them in for more than we're actually paying for the new one.
And that's still my same point with a smaller truck, if we're just using it for Field testing, I mean, you still got the four doors and a smaller bed.
The smaller one doesn't have the demand for the resale value possibly.
You can't even order them.
But I think, I think you'll be surprised on where the value is on the full, because no one makes, people that are making a living there. The reason their, their value is so high is because people can run a business off a pickup truck. And it's that half ton and larger where that value is there.
And for our application, for everything we do, I would say the smallest would be a half ton pickup with the standard cab and eight foot bed. I mean, we're not looking for the comfort or the amenities or anything, or even having a four door.
So the, the trucks you're buying are eight foot beds?
Yeah.
Okay, that, that makes a difference. That's what I was wondering. Do you need, you need an eight foot bed?
Correct.
Okay.
Just functionality. By the time you put a box in there and everything else, it's, it's tight.
Any questions on this? Consensus?
Yep.
Moving on to page 43, um, this is just our miscellaneous small equipment. Uh, we just do this every year. We just put it in there. Um, just the capital for that hasn't changed since we started this two years ago.
What type of equipment, just so there?
Uh, generators, a lot of our park buildings, like especially this year with the windstorms and stuff. We're chasing, bouncing back and forth. Power tools, just stuff within reason, everyday stuff.
Have you been hitting the budget on 25,000 or have it been over, have it been under?
It's 5,000.
It's 5,000 a year. Twenty, yeah, we've been okay.
Okay.
Any more questions? Consensus?
Yep.
Next one, page 44. Um, this is our big piece of equipment this year. It's probably the biggest item that we're looking at. Um, this is our big excavator, uh, $350,000. Um, how old is it, the one that we got now?
Uh, current one we have is a 2013. It's got just under 6,000 hours on it. So we're about 600 hours a year. It's our everyday machines, rubber tire excavator, UIC, like the ditch digging, um, tree clearing. As of right now, it's, it's another piece, and I've said this in the past, that is kind of getting to that point to where the, um, the bigger things will start to go. Stuff that is going to nickel and dime us. We have a great maintenance program, but um, it's just something that as I see along with the rubber tire backhoe and everything else that we have. It is like a, a 10 to 15 year purchase. And right now, everything in that wheelhouse is about a year and a year and a half out. So as we get closer, you know, it's a 23 purchase. Realistically, I may see it in 24. So that's another 600, uh, 750 hours we'd be putting on the current one.
Did we get any estimate? I mean, how did you come over 350,000?
Um, I took what is out on the market, every size machine, and added a bunch. So typically, this is going to come in lower than that, but I'm going worst case scenario, just what we went through in the last two years with ordering equipment. And it's stuck, you know, the boom is stuck on a container overseas and the rest of it's here. And we got to pay X amount to get it here. It's just the name of the game unfortunately right now. I don't see it being 350, but we shot high.
What would you be doing with the current one? Would you keep it or would you be looking to?
It's probably already sold.
Okay.
So this is without trade in, but worst case scenario.
We never put trade in values because we never know what it's going to get. But you also saw too, remember I had to come back to you twice for our snowplow truck with a plow? It just kept going up, kept going up every three months. Um, that's what we're facing right now.
There is companies that, salesmen that seek us out because of our maintenance program, knowing that the piece that they're going to get traded in. And they already have people looking at it, so we have that on our side.
So you'll do a trade in on it, you think? Or are we selling it outright?
It'll be a trade in, most likely, depending. I mean, if it's gonna, if we're going to get more, obviously we always have the other route, but.
Sometimes usability.
Not a guarantee.
Consensus?
Moving on, uh, page 45, we're looking at a new leaf sucker machine. Um, this one's a little higher than we had in the past, but again, this is a one man piece of equipment compared to a four man piece of equipment. Um, again, we are not stopping our leaf pickup program anytime soon. Um, so we're, we're, we kind of need these things to keep going with it.
And we're adding subdivisions. So this will be, right now we have somebody and people walk behind and suck it up and, and this one will have the thing in front and does it itself?
The, well, it has the option for it. And when Scott and I put this in here, our, the last leaf machine we bought, I think, was in the $50,000 range. And that's where you see the guys swinging a tube and phoning up the rigs. Um, we went around to a couple of other municipalities to try and see if we could find something that I could just do the curb and gutter subdivisions with. Not requiring as much manpower because it's hard just to find part timers, part time help right now. Um, as of right now, the ones that we currently have are flirting with about 70,000. So I'm still waiting to get prices back and it's all within the last month. So if possible, at the least, I do need to replace one of the ones that we had, we've had since we started sucking up leaves in 2002. And we just keep sticking parts into it and parts in it. So at the least, we can still get the one we have now.
So this will be like sucks off the side then?
Yeah.
So I, I've seen them where they have them where they come to the front and they can move them around and pick them up themselves.
Yeah, it's not that elaborate. This will work with our.
That's a lot more money.
Yeah, a lot more.
But then you have a lot less people.
Yeah, I mean, that work is, and that also works like in West Dallas, Milwaukee, where they have vertical curb. They can pin that against a vertical curb. We have a roll curb. So, I mean, even your best driver, it's gonna, you're gonna be doubling back and backing up. And that point, I don't think we'd be as efficient, so.
And these last two pieces of equipment were things that you projected last year, which, which we certainly appreciate.
Right, yeah. And just to kind of let you know, the current ones that we have, we stick about 8,000, $10,000 in a year, just in parts.
I bet.
Just to keep them going, so. Outside of fuel and salt, picking up leaves.
So with the side one, you'll still need another truck there or?
No, this is, this will marry up to all the boxes we have on the trucks. It's the same setup. We don't have to change anything. Purchase any other equipment to go with it. It's kind of a, if it works out and the price comes back, great. If not, we can still upgrade the current equipment we have.
Consensus?
Yep.
Moving on, page 46. Um, again, we were bringing up Old Loomis Bridge. We got that done last year. Um, again, we need to do some guard rail. Um, the slopes kind of got constructed and they were steeper than anticipated. So we need some guard rail for that Old Loomis Bridge.
You guys do the guard rail work yourself or you hire, you hired it out?
This would be hired out.
I just look at guard rail and I see 75,000. Looks like we're going to have a half a freeway going down the side of the road, you know?
No, it, there is, um, being that it is 35 on that road, there's different specs that they have to follow. So a little outside of our wheelhouse, but.
And that'd be all four sides, correct?
Yeah.
Yep. So remember, four sides of it, so.
Consensus?
Yes.
Um, moving on, page 47. Again, not for next year, but for 2024. We're looking, we're looking at doing the replacement of the old salt shed. That's about $300,000 that we're projecting. Um, I'm going to go kind of through these now. Page 48. Um, our mini excavator, we're looking at in 2024 about $100,000 to do the replacement of that one. Um, page 49, our asphalt paver, we're looking to do that in 2026. That's about 85,000. Um, and page 50, we're always kind of kicking this out a little bit, but if we ever have to add additional cold storage at DPW, we're estimating about 400,000 in 2026. However, the cost of building materials and everything, that number is probably going to go up when you actually do it. Um, right now, it's just going up quite much.
So, so we bought a building not that long ago and it's not big enough for what we did? Is that what you're projecting?
Well, we're projecting as we add more subdivisions and we need more pieces of equipment and.
So that building really, it's not big enough then? You don't, you don't really think it'll be big enough, huh?
Yeah, I mean, the, when utilities went to Apollo, they're full up and now we're full up already. I mean, it, we were, we were tight as it was. Stuff was sitting outside.
It was small before. It's got this big building.
And even now, I mean, it's seasonal. It helps obviously in the wintertime, but where we can store things. But it just says we're growing and purchasing equipment and it's by that time, I, I think we'll need something.
Down the road is good you're projecting. What about the, the old Boxhorn Building? Do we still have that one or we, do we?
So that is another one. We have the old Boxhorn Building. Uh, we've been kind of using it for the last couple of years. Um, you approved back two years ago to kind of look at it. So we have, um, and here's the things, the two things that we found. One, the budget that we planned for is not even close. It won't, it just won't cover it due to how it gone up. Two, we have found that it's logistically kind of foolish for us to keep driving back and forth. So one of the things that actually Ryan and I did talk, we're not going to do it. We, we're, we're not going to spend the money on something and we would rather spend the money and save it for cold storage. So our game plan is we'd sell that building between 500 and 1,000 bucks. Someone would come, take it down, get rid of it. Uh, we would use DPW staff, get rid of the foundation, using our own operating budget, not any other costs, and then just throw it with grass, landscape it and be done with it. It, it's kind of a logistic nightmare going back and forth. And when we first did it, it was probably easy to do a quick repair. It's not, it's not cost effective right now to do it. Um, did I get everything about that? That's pretty much?
Yeah, the building, I mean, when we, when we bet it was before everything happened, prices, inflation, everything else. And actually, the price that I got, um, was the same size, just taller walls, 14 foot or 16 foot walls with a 14 foot door. So we could store anything in there. We've cut that building in half already just because of the price. And for us to chase all the way across town just to store equipment and then go back and forth with it, it, it doesn't make sense. Right now, I have a lot of seasonal stuff in the old PD. It's right here. Obviously, that may not always be there as an option, so we're looking down the road that we can do something in-house, on site, that would benefit both departments.
And you said you would sell that property? That's what you're thinking?
No, not the property, the building. Oh, the building's kind of worth something. Again, you get five to 100.
I see, yeah, I was thinking.
You go 500 to 1,000 bucks, but what you do, we can't sell the property, but 5 to 1,000 dollars, someone comes in, takes down the building and gets away. Basically, you're, you're, you're giving them their.
I was just wondering what's happening with the building.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, thanks. And that, that's just all come up real recent, just to let you know.
Well, that's why, you know, I figured that you put this in for 2026. I was just, just wondering why we're going down that road, so that answers it.
Anything else? We're going to switch over to water utility and I want to make sure anyone else has any other questions related to DPW before I release Ryan.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ryan.
Utilities on page 51.
We're going to start with water utility, page 51. Um, for 2023, we have no truck request. Um, and I think the, the reason why it will be coming, so just to let everyone know, we have a big shop vac truck that we need. And that is going to be a very costly price, so when we do have some of those, like we did the camera truck a couple of years ago, we just kind of waive our no truck request that year to kind of save, uh, save some money. Moving on, page 52, uh, SCADA security. Um, what this is, is basically at our, our wells and our lift stations, we are going to get a FOBs system that allows us to kind of like when a person is there, we use our FOB system to check in and check out. Um, it's kind of like another, uh, level of security. Um, couple, last year you guys gave us permission where we copied our SCADA system so that if, if we have any type of cyber attack, um, we're able to flip it over and no one touches it. This is just another way of us kind of getting in line with, uh, security reason, protocols. And we broke it down for the next three years. And this is both, is this both water and sewer or, or just water? We, we kind of split them. Again, this is just water because we have to split them up.
This comes out of the water fund or is this coming out of landfill?
Working capital from water.
Water.
Water, that's what I thought. Okay. I didn't see anything.
Yeah, if you look at the bottom, it says water working capital.
Okay, gotcha. Okay.
Consensus?
Sure.
Yep.
Page 53. Uh, again, this is just our number of water meters needed. Um, again, we are projecting 200,000, 200,000 for the next five years. Um, this is our basic of new construction and the increase of water meters every year, replacing each year.
Questions? Consensus?
Yep.
Yep.
Our next one is page 54. Construct a water, uh, meter station that would allow Accrach and our water sold to contractors that currently connect at a hydrant near the city garage. So we have it. Um, we have contractors that come, but we don't have a really good system of tracking it. Is that the best way of putting it?
Pretty much right now in the honor system. There's a meter there and it's on their honor to report what they, what they gave them. This, this system will have a credit card type reader that they'll use.
So what's the return on investment projection? I mean, 100,000 seems like a lot to recoup, you know, I, I don't know, maybe it is.
It's going to involve a building, uh, along with the filling system to keep, so can use it year round to keep it from freezing. Uh, right now, what we do is shut it down in the winter. Uh, there's trucks lined up there all day long.
Yep.
So what's the amount of water that we sell annually or whatever timeframe you?
You know, I can't, this, this, this last two years has really increased. It's, we're probably selling a couple hundred thousand gallons. Before this year, it really didn't make a diff, make sense to do this because we'd, you know, we'd maybe sell a couple hundred dollars worth of water. Now, it's really increased. The hydro excavators out there are just all over the place. And the guys that are doing directional drilling, there's sometimes three or four trucks lined up to get water right now.
What's the cost on that? Cost per gallon or?
A regular 359,000, I think is what we're charging them and a $30 permit.
Okay.
So you think there'll be less trucks once you start charging them?
I doubt it. There, there's very few communities in this area that, that are even letting them buy water right now.
And you currently shut down in the winter?
We shut down in the winter because we're just filling off a hydrant.
Will this be active all year round?
It'll be active year round because it'll be in a heated building.
So we sell more water?
Yeah.
All those pools in the winter can get filled?
Yeah. Ironically, the pool fillers, we very see very few of them because when our water has something in it, when you fill a pool, gives it a blue tinge. Kind of looks like the gravel pits off Racine Avenue and the freeway. It gives, in a big volume, it gives it that green tinge and people don't like seeing that.
PH.
So we, we have very few pool fill people.
Consensus? Okay, sure.
Page 55. Again, this is just our, our well rehabs. Um, in 2023, we're doing what? Well 13, iron filter and medium replacement?
And that's all governed. You have to do this, right?
Uh, well, yes and no. We have to do it because of the, the medium in, in that iron filter, well 13, is starting to be depleted. It, it's not regulated. Nobody from the DNR says we have to do it, but if we don't, they will.
Consensus?
Yeah.
And Scott, I just want to make sure, after we do 2024 and 2025, we've hit pretty much all our wells. Um, I think for the last five years and then we should be good for a little bit.
Right.
Just to kind of let everyone know that we've, we've, we have been attacking this, uh, pretty well, so. Page 56. Again, these are talking about water relays. Again, we keep kind of moving this down. Uh, sooner or later though, that these aging water mains, um, they're going to, at some point fail. Um, we're just providing costs and letting everyone know at some point. When we would do these projects, please remember the road program would, would go right over top of them. I mean, it would be foolish for us to do all this work and not do the road program right over the top, so. But we, we thought it'd be earlier, um, but in the last couple of years, a lot of them, they were going pretty hard for some water main breaks, but we haven't heard of many right now, which is good.
It's the old community water system that we've taken over in the 80s and early 90s. And we had a bunch of breaks, thought we'd have to replace them, but they've kind of settled down in the last couple of years, so.
So we have nothing going on this current budget then?
Correct, correct. I'm just kind of like letting you know, we've, we put it in there the last couple, five years, but we keep kind of pushing it.
These next few pages are just for things down the road.
Yeah. Uh, page 57, we're talking about water tower painting again. Um, you know, we had a study done, was it last year, uh, just telling us when we need to do them. So again, that's kind of just set up when we are doing them for 2024 and 2026, just to kind of let you guys know.
The water tower, didn't we paint the water tower now?
We painted one, this is, there's, we have three.
Okay.
So, um, there's the one right by the DPW. There's the one that's on Hill and Dale, which is kind of like, what kind of, we, it's not really a tower we.
Yeah, it's a stand pipe.
Stand pipe.
That's what I was wondering. I, I don't know if I've ever seen that one really, if I paid attention to it.
Yeah, and it's more, um, it's not your typical ones that you see and then the other one is by the gingerbread house.
Right, right. Okay. That's why I just wanted to make sure we weren't repainting the same one I didn't.
Correct. That should last us a very long time. Um, page, where are we at here?
58.
58. Uh, we're looking at the Weatherwood Courts. Uh, again, we moved it up from last year to 2025. Um, this is, we'll be replacing some of the laterals. Again, while we're doing 2025 is, and we can't move it to 2024 is, um, that's when we do our road program with curb and gutter. So after we would hit this one, we would hit it with our, uh, road program as well. Page 59, uh, we're talking about Hill and Dale Booster Station. Again, we keep pushing that off. Um, there might have been some movement with the fact if we were looking at it doing it with Fleet Farm, but again, nothing happened and we had to, they are doing a well. Just to kind of let everyone know.
So the reason they're doing a well versus, we could have supplied the water, uh, pressure that they would have needed to that area. So that's why we let, typically we would force them to hook up and.
Yeah, it's a pressure and volume thing with them. We couldn't meet the fire flow needs.
It's on the edge, right? It's all the way in the corner.
Yeah. And that is all that we have for water utility.
Thank you.
We're moving on to sewer. Any questions about water utility before we go to sewer?
Sorry, sewer.
All right, page 60. This is our jet vac truck. This is a one, $500,000 every 15 years.
It's only 15 years old?
Yeah.
Next year it'll be just 15 years.
Okay. I thought we bought that before that.
And same way, a trade on that too, right?
We, we will trade. Uh, we just got word last week that this number we have here might be about 10% outdated already. But we should be able to cover that with the trade in. And we usually don't try to cover anything with the trade in, but in this case, the, the, the price of these things is going up so fast that, uh, yeah, we will probably have to cover it with the trade in value.
Okay.
We, we've been testing, um, how many? We tested three different types or two?
Uh, yeah, we had three or four, four actually different demos. We've got to narrow down to two. They're about the same price and, uh, these salesmen are in the office every, every week. So, you know, once we get through this process, we will pick one of the two and move forward.
So we can order that before the end of the year, right?
Uh, I'm thinking we're going to probably wait until after we, final budget is approved.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Consensus?
Yeah.
Moving on, page 61. Um, just as, this is just, uh, we're doing, um, I don't know, the description's wrong, but it, it's just camera truck software. Um, we got that camera truck last year. Uh, we needed to do some updates in our software system. Twenty twenty-three, we're just replacing the VFDs at McShane Lift Station.
What's a VFD?
Variable Frequency Drive. It's the electronics that runs the motors.
Thank you.
And we didn't have any, any major dilemmas during this last storm?
No, actually for the five or plus inches of rain we had, uh, we came through it pretty well.
Yeah.
We were, we had things filled up pretty well, but, uh, we kept it all in the pipe and we didn't back any basements up, so.
Or discharge.
Or, yeah.
Or discharge.
Which is a big thing too.
Oh, yeah.
I think our one storage area, we, if some of you don't know, we have a storage area that does one point seven million gallons. I think we had one point three in there.
Between one point three and one point four million.
We still had room, huh? Wow.
Yeah.
So.
Crazy.
It was, it was a long night for our crew.
Yeah. Moving along, uh, page sixty-four. This is our private property, I and I. Um, again, twenty twenty-three, uh, nine hundred thousand dollars. Again, this is money that when we pay M, M S D, um, Alderman Kabaki makes a point of how much we pay them, they set aside a certain amount of money that we have to reuse. Um, this year, we have one of our work plans already started. Um, it's on the west side of Little Muskego Lake. This is then our next work plan and then the following year, tw- twenty twenty-four is two hundred fifty thousand dollars. We continually get this, um, from M S D and we'll be doing this program, so.
Scott, this is part of the program that, the green infrastructure that we opted out of, correct?
No. Nope. This is a separate program. They have not given any community the opt-out power yet.
Okay.
It would be nice to be able to opt out of this program and use the money as we see fit rather than as they see fit, but they haven't given us that option yet.
Yeah.
Because you're, you're doing like the laterals or something, right?
Correct. It's, it's basically.
And some of them probably don't need to be done, but they could be updated, put it that way.
Yeah, and, and again, this is all on private property, I and I. And, and what we have found and right now, just to let everyone know, in our first round, we have eighty-eight percent participation and that's really good. Now, how did we get that? We told everyone that we would cover everything and it'd be us for free, like restoration. Um, if we take out a tree, we'll try to replace it with another tree and it won't be in the same location, won't be the same size. The only way that we found that success is by us covering everything, just to let everyone know. Other communities, they try to do it where they do a cost share and it just doesn't work. The other thing too is this is full lateral replacement. We have an inspector on site. We're replacing that entire lateral. We know what the new pipe is going in. We see it, we see the connection. Um, we like that better. Um, we, we, we know what it is. We know what's going in there.
Plus, you wouldn't be able to spend the nine hundred thousand that you're spending.
Well, we can, there's other options. They do pipelining, they do pipe bursting, but in our opinion is we rather know what we're putting in the ground, so.
You, you can save a little bit of money with lining, less disruption to the yards, bigger failure. They've had a lot of failures with the ones they've done, other communities have done in the past. Uh, we don't want to put something in two years later if I know it fails.
Consensus?
Yeah.
Yep.
And the last one on page sixty-five, uh, we need a new portable generator, um, twenty twenty-three. Um, again, generators, um, one besides this, when, besides just our utility, we remember we're doing our emergency management plan. We, we now have enough generators to cover pretty much, uh, everything. It's a good thing. Um, also too, when we do have power out, we take generators and we put them at various lift stations and wells, correct?
We've got twenty-eight lift stations. Some have standby generators onsite. We utilize portable generators for the dozen or so that have no onsite power. So we, we need one more. We've, we've got a couple of them now, we could really use one more.
They're all the, they're all the same size that you're using portable?
For the most part, they're between fifty and a hundred KW and they, they'll run multiple stations.
Any other questions on utility for Scott? Last item is just something down the line.
The last one and on page sixty-six, it's just a, a study that we always have for stormwater by Kelsey Drive Area. Um, again, it's something that, uh, when I took this job, Wayne, uh, former DPW superintendent said that we might need someday. Um, we're, we're handling things as development happens there. Um, but in case we ever have to get a bigger development, we might have to do a study. So it's just kind of in there. We just push it along a little bit. Um, again, we're, it's more of like letting you know, one day we might have to use it, but right now, as long as it's, it's not kind of like needed immediately, we just kind of move it one, one year back, so. We're now moving over to special revenue funds, which means parks conservation.
We, we're doing it item by item.
You know, before, let's start with page sixty-nine while parks people kind of come up and help me as, as needed. Uh, purchase property for conservation. So that's page sixty-nine, the last page. Um, what, what has brought up to us is there's a piece of property that potentially, um, they could ask us or the DNR might be considering purchasing. It, it's, it's again located on the east side of Big Muskego Lake. We don't know for sure. I, I kind of gave you the best description possibly of that, this scenario could go a multiple ways, but if I don't let you know and this pops up in twenty twenty-three, you're all going to be like, why didn't you plan for it? So this is kind of like one of our, our, our ways, just to kind of let you know real quick, that this potentially could be something that the city has to cover.
The other source?
What?
I do not know.
We, we have the money in a plethora of other accounts where we'd be piecing it together to do it. Um, big chunk of it may, would be, it's matching funding with the DNR, so say we've come up with a hundred thousand and they come up with four hundred thousand.
So why would we want to buy it versus the DNR? I, I know in the past, we had the DNR buy some property.
They require cost sharing when they do it, so.
Okay.
Um, stops development.
We get to keep it, basically.
It, it keeps the area, um, this, this partic, this particular piece would be a good place to do it. It abuts to other things, so, yeah. I, I think it's, I, I can't really say a whole lot about it beside, when it comes up, we can talk about it then, but, uh, I, I, I think it's something good.
But cost sharing is what it comes out to. Got it? Okay.
There's large amounts of other DNR land adjacent.
Right, that's, and I know we, they, they purchased some on their own.
Yeah.
In that area. That's why I was wondering and I know we did some cost sharing on some of them too.
This, this is one of those cases where people are, you know, they hear a new subdivision, they're complaining about it and, you know, why are we doing all this development out here? Um, you know, that's all driven by private enterprise. Well, this may be an option where the DNR is interested in it, the property owner is interested in selling it this way and for it to be facilitated through the DNR, they ask us to cost share on it. And we've done this all around the big lake.
Yeah, the big lake has been a lot of, lot of like that, sure.
Okay, we are now going to go to parks. Um, I think one of the best.
Is that sixty-seven?
The best actually is sixty-eight. Look at the spreadsheet. It, it kind of gives you a rough idea and I think.
But yes, sixty-seven is the gross number that the itemized breakdowns on sixty-eight.
I think one of the things that I want to do before we just go into twenty twenty-three is to kind of give you kind of a five-year plan and kind of talk about a couple of things. Um, one, I think everyone, we're, we're aware that we are doing our parks and open space plan. We're in the process of kind of doing it. Um, last year, Tammy's group did a great job with the survey. We got really good participation. Um, we got a lot of things that, that they're, that residents are asking for and it's allowing us to update our parks and open space plan. When we do our parks and open space plan, this generates how we want to do planning for the next five years in the parks and open space. So some of the big key kind of like ideas and, and cost sharing that I want to just kind of throw out before we get into the details, well, one of them, um, in twenty twenty-three you're going to see is a dog park. So, um, we have a person who is going to do, eh, who has come to the city and is going to provide a donation. Um, we have planned that we would be about twenty-five thousand dollars for this dog park. Dog parks have been probably consistently in top five requests. Um, we have found a location in Moreland Park. Um, we are working with the donor. Um, but that is one of the things that will probably happen next year in twenty twenty-three that wasn't on there in the last five years that you saw.
So that's by the skateboard area?
It would be just south of the skateboard area.
Yeah, there's a lot of open land over, but it goes back into a development area too, so how, it, it'll be far enough away from residential?
We believe so.
At least we think so, so. And, and just again.
The reason I bring it up is because I've, I've heard, you know, we've had that open space at, uh, Park Arthur, that area over there too as well. That we, we have no, I don't see anything with Park Arthur improvements in that area for, through twenty twenty-seven.
Yeah, so again, kind of going through twenty twenty-four, um, a couple of big highlights. So we got two parks, twenty twenty-four and twenty-five, Schmidt and Freedom. They both have a tennis court, pickleball court, basketball court. Um, again, both in surveys say, don't remove those, even though we have a nice tennis facility at Kirk, but they're both have aged pretty bad and those are two big costs, hundred twenty thousand each, just to kind of let you know. Um, we also have under twenty twenty-four, idle aisle, concrete boat ramps.
Let me, let me, so a tennis court is also a pickle?
We can do multiple.
So you'll just line it?
Yes. We can, we're looking at, whatever we try to do.
Do a purpose court, is that what you're?
Multiple uses, you know?
I know, and pickleball is becoming a big word around here.
It's extremely, it's extremely busy. Our courts are always busy.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, but again, we're trying to look for solutions to do multiple ones, so.
But, but you're not looking to expand, so if you have an existing tennis court, you're just going to take that same spot and then make it a dual purpose?
Correct. Correct. So, I don't think we even have room there, um, both places. At Freedom for sure, there's not much room that we have there, um, to do that, to expand. So these are just to replace what's there, so. Um, the other kind of like things that I would like to show is back in twenty twenty-four, again, idle aisle, concrete boat ramps, they both need to be done. I am working with Ryan on a grant through the DNR. Um, I got a chapter thirty permit this year to kind of do the work. We are then putting plans together and then Ryan and I will probably have to go to Madison and present our case to get a grant. We'll see how it goes, um, but we're trying our best, um, to do that and that's why that's out in twenty twenty-four. Um, the other thing in twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, let's talk about trails. Um, we got a Martin Drive Trail, um, that's Land and Drive to Oak Hill Trail. Uh, we figure twenty twenty-four, that'll be eighty-three thousand, five hundred dollars cost for design and about twenty twenty-five, seven hundred fifty-one thousand dollars for uh, construction. Again, that is not including purchasing of any right of way, just to let you know. Um, another trail, um, that didn't make it on here, but I do get a cost, the We Energy Trail, that is about six point seven miles. If you wanted to pave that, um, that's, would probably need about eight feet wide, five inches of asphalt and with contingencies, that's just about a million bucks to do that. Again, that's just asphalt. Um, if there's any cost for excavation below surface, some of the other things, we, we didn't do that, I just got a quick cost for asphalt. Um, that will be next.
That particular one, if we were to do that, I would want to break it up over like four years.
Yeah.
Do so many miles a year.
And there's other options too, we can talk about. They, they, you know, I don't know, it came to, I, I think it came to you first and it might've came to me after that.
Constantly.
Then you gave me some answers, but, uh, I think the big question on, on that email that went out is, is maintenance and I don't really see maintenance on here for dollars, so is that just in our basic maintenance role program?
Yeah, it's in our operating. We do the best we can with what we have in operating.
No, I understand that. I just wanted to bring that.
Yep. I mean, again, we, we probably, you know, what we do is remember, we, we snowplow every trail, they're not at our priority and we have like, I believe, three weeks to get it done, but.
And I explain that to people all the time, that, that it's really not our program, that we do it as a convenience in the wintertime, as an afterthought, after we clear everything else out.
Yep, but the, the guys do a really good job. Usually within a week, we get it all done, so.
I was surprised to see it cleared as good as it is all the time, so.
Yep. Um, again, twenty twenty-four, you got Moreland Park, another pavilion with bathrooms. Again, that makes sense kind of with the dog park as our, our rentals have been used. I think we're over a hundred rentals again this year, um, for pavilions. Um, twenty twenty-five, uh, again, I mentioned the, the trail for Martin, um, Sand Hill Park, putting permanent bathrooms down there. Again, um, I'll think a lot of you have seen Mallard Reserve, um, it's stone, um, they should be gaining curb and gutter and pavement within the next month. By November first, they're going to sell lots. There's forty-four lots, I believe, twenty are already spoken for, so that's going to happen pretty quick down there.
Let me ask you, as long as we're talking bathrooms.
Yep.
So let's just start with the Stan Hill. There's already infrastructure in place there for that?
From my understanding, when they designed the pavilion, they've, they've, um, Dave Simpson, um, the former.
Okay.
He, he had a plan to drop it.
Eighty-five thousand dollars, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. It's a little cheaper because they did some planning for that.
And then, of course, Moreland Park would be all brand new infrastructure.
Correct, and it would be a, a bigger pavilion and the pavilion's already there at Sand Hill Park. This would be a brand new one, there's no pavilion.
And this is basically because of the dog park?
No, we're getting more use. Um, you got probably soccer fields there. Um, it, it's a big park, it'd be a better one to probably rent out for places, um, just some of the other things. been used. I think we're over a hundred rentals again this year, um, for pavilions. Um, twenty twenty-five, uh, again, I mentioned the, the trail for Martin, um, Sand Hill Park, putting permanent bathrooms down there. Again, um, I'll think a lot of you have seen Mallard Reserve. Um, it's stone. Um, they should be getting curb and gutter and pavement within the next month. By November first, they're going to sell lots. There's forty-four lots, I believe, twenty are already spoken for, so that's gonna happen pretty quick down there.
Let, let me ask you, as long as we're talking bathrooms.
Yep.
So let's just start with the first annual. There's already infrastructure in place there for that?
From my understanding, when they designed the pavilion, they've, they've, um, Dave Simpson, um, the former...
Okay.
He, he had a plan to drop it to...
Eighty-five thousand dollars, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. It's a little cheaper because they did some planning for that.
And then, of course, Moreland Park would be all brand-new infrastructure.
Correct, and it would be a, a bigger pavilion, and the pavilion's already there at Sand Hill Park. This would be a brand-new one. There's no pavilion.
And this is basically because of the dog park?
No, we're gaining more use. Um, you got probably soccer fields there. Um, i- it's a big park. It'd be a better one to probably rent out for places. Um, just some of the other things, you got a, also a playground there.
This is a full-blown pavilion going in, okay?
Yep.
So we're gonna have like a concession out of it then, and things, kinda like, uh, I don't, uh, not idle, uh, Park Arthur type thing, only probably a little smaller scale?
Or... Yep.
Okay.
Just a, a note back to the Martin Drive Trail.
Yep.
I put a little asterisk there, cause if you're gonna start playing that next year, we should talk about that beforehand. You're looking at a million-dollar trail there. And I'd rather not see that flow forward without a, a great deal of discussion, even for the planning of that.
And, and, and we're planning right now with higher oil prices, too. Hopefully, things change, but you, you never know.
I could keep going up. I, I would agree with you, and, um, it's not going to without more of a in-depth conversation and blessing from this council at that point, but we got next year to do that, if we're gonna do that, so.
I just remember in the past when we talked about a two hundred fifty thousand dollar trail and ended up being six hundred thousand, so we start talking a million, you're, you're right on, and, you know, you never know where this is gonna go. I mean, a million's a lot to start with.
No, and it, before we expand any of the trails or add trails, I think it's in, I mean, that, we need to talk more on just that subject at the time and what we're gonna do, and, I mean, it's not a, we're not putting it in for next year, this year's budget. We're talking down the line, and it's kind of a placeholder, so we don't surprise you. Yeah.
And the other thing, too, is...
It doesn't really have my support. It's just...
What was, what was asked of me?
This is being driven by the, by the citizens are asking for it, so.
And what, what was, remember Public Works Mean was asked of me to provide a cost and for, to put it on here, so that's what I did. The other thing, too, guys, it would be on the north side of the road. If anyone drove it, it's really tight over there, and there's going to be some, you know, for every person who wants a trail, there's a person who doesn't want a trail. So, um, I think we've seen that with all our tr- trails here.
Saw that on Hill and Dale.
Yep.
Well, except they all want it, no?
Yep.
Now that we didn't do it.
So, I, I, I just wanna share it, and then the last big one, just to kinda, another one in twenty twenty-six, um, Splash Pad. It's top five again for parks. Um, it's, it's been asked about it. Um, the other one, two in twenty twenty-seven, West Park Arthur developed. So as we are going through this, we are getting issues of idle aisles really busy. This is our first year of those baseball fields. Those baseball fields are beginning to get more and more and more use. We didn't even do fall leagues there, just to kinda let the grass go, but we are gonna start doing fall leagues. There's a plan. We gotta sit down and we gotta have a talk about it. It's to kinda give you an idea. Where I got that cost was, back in the day, uh, there was a contractor who put a cost in for the plan that was submitted to the DNR. I kinda took that cost and I added inflation and I kinda multiplied it out all the way to twenty twenty-seven. So I, I'm, I'm giving you a fair warning, um, again, but it's something where we have to at least ta- have that discussion, as, you know, we have more homes and more people moving in. Um, our parks are seeing an uptick, and parking's gonna be an issue with idle aisle and Park Arthur there, so. Now, just to, any questions before? Just focus on the twenty twenty-three, just to kinda long-term talk it, so. And please, feel free to come and talk to us at any time. We can give you a, you know, a long-term planning, but I think this is a good little discussion to have to give you guys and all a, a big picture of the park system for the next five years, so. Yep.
Veterans Park Playground, projection last year was three and a quarter, four and a quarter this year?
For veterans, yep. So... The equipment has gotten kind of a little bit more expensive. Um, now, I, I wanna let that four and a quarter and how we are trying to share money. So we have, the Legion is doing a fundraiser. If you have anyone talking to the Legion, they're trying to raise twenty thousand dollars to actually do, um, add some more like shading in some bench areas. If you went over to Lions Park, we added a little shading for the pickleball. They're raising, their goal's to raise twenty thousand dollars to help us, and that's not part of that cost. That'd be a separate item. The other thing, too, is we're working to do our first community build for this park. That would save us a ton of money as well. Again, this is our main park. Every festival's here. I'm not gonna lie to you, four hundred twenty-five thousand dollars is really not that much for a park, eh, eh, for a playground set for this size. If, again, I have two little kids. I go everywhere. Uh, the one down at Summer Fest Grounds, I'm assuming is one, about one and a half million dollars. If it's, it's down there, it's a rubber flooring. Every community seems to be outdoing the next, and we're trying to keep it as cost-effective as possible, but we would do a rubber, um, flooring for this one, kinda like you have at Sand Hill Park. But we are hoping, like anyone who wants to do what Alley did for Manchester, we welcome. Um, Legion's has stepped up. I think they raised a couple grand already, so we are working with them, and their, their goal's twenty thousand and provide extra, um, shading. The footprint would be very similar to what the footprint you see out there. Um, you know, you have a larger, you have swing sets, you would have a, uh, what, three to five, or one to five age, kind of like playground, and like a five to twelve age. Is that the center?
Is it the condition? Is that why we have to, were redoing that, or?
It's our oldest one, I believe, and then Schmidt would be the next one.
So what do we do with the old equipment?
It's scrap.
It's scrap?
Yeah.
Liability's too lo- too high for anyone. Once you move them, no one wants them, cause their insurance won't cover them once you...
Yeah, and then the safety, again.
Cause that's a decent-sized set out there, you know? This is the only reason I bring it up.
So, i- if you look at for next year in twenty twenty-three, guys, you know, um, Park Arthur Turf Care, that's three thousand dollars. That's, that, that's maintenance.
Is, just going back to the, um, vets playground set, I mean, all, all has, is there any, structurally, is it wrong, is there anything going on it, or is it becoming a maintenance issue, or? Okay.
We did have to replay the slide, was it two years ago, I believe?
We do yearly inspections with everything, and it's getting to the point where our, our bigger pieces are failing, the rubber coatings coming off of them, and it's getting to the point where it's either we can't fully pass inspection, and we gotta stick a bunch of money into it.
Okay, that's important.
And it's, it's probably our most-used playground.
Oh, yeah, it probably is, yeah.
Because if it was in good shape, I would say swap the...
And we did that with Kirth.
I, I do the water.
A couple of years ago.
Splash Pad first.
Yep.
But...
Yeah, if you remember, we raised up Kirth, who was always wet. We used existing equipment, raised the whole thing up to save money, but it's a little past that.
But just kinda getting back, besides that one, if you look at Wichita's, eh, you know, our miscellaneous replacement equipment, all those costs are, are typical cost that we have every year. The only real big item for parks, the two, one, the Veterans Park Playground at four twenty-five, and the twenty-five thousand for the dog park. But again, that's, that was driven by a donation. Uh, someone's coming in.
So twenty-five thousand is, is that just like putting a fence up?
That, that's just our part.
That's our part.
Okay.
I, I don't know what, again...
We don't have a number yet from the, from the, I'm meeting with them on the twenty-second. Um, I've had some preliminary meetings with them, but they actually wanna show up and like, give me, react to our number that we're giving them for the whole thing. Um, you know, they, they very well might cover all of it. I don't know.
So then they'll have to like buy a permit, they use it, something that we're looking to do?
Um, no, uh, you mean as far as the people using it? Um, generally, these are self, um, self-placed, meaning, um, you have to pick up after yourself, and, um, we cut the grass, but, um, you know, and if they don't take care of it, you shut it down for two weeks, and then people start self-placing other people, or they see something, they pick it up, um, cause for some reason, Ryan's guys don't wanna go out there and pick up poop every day, so.
It'll be a fenced-in area, just to let everyone know. It will be fenced in, so. Um, we don't know. Sometimes they use fenced-in areas. They do a, a large dog area and a small dog area, so. Again, preliminary.
But again, this is like, he said, this is driven because we had a generous donor come forward. Yeah, no, that one, that one covered the fence.
It was, um, I didn't mind.
Well, how about we do this, eh, once I meet with these people and find out where we're at, I'll send out drawings and everything to you guys.
We did a rendering.
Yeah. There, there's, there's a good-sized room, yep, so. Any other discussion on next year for parks or future?
Consensus?
Yep.
Okay.
That is all I have.
And that concludes the twenty twenty-three capital budget. Discussion of ARPA funds. Do you wanna do that this meeting, or do you wanna roll that? The ARPA funds, there was a request to bring it forward. We can, do you wanna do it this one? We're already at six-thirty, still with another meeting yet, but...
We can hold off on that for...
Just bring it back?
Two weeks.
Okay.
Yeah. As long as we're on budget, um, our, our next...
Capital budget.
Our next budget process is gonna be the operating budget.
Correct.
Is gonna be the operating budget. Uh, I, I believe that all of us feel that our number one resource in this city is our staff. We don't manufacture, we don't sell a product, we sell services. It's been a difficult year for everyone because of economic cycles. Capital markets are down, uh, consumer price index is up because of numerous things, rent and cost of homes and gasoline and whatnot. One of the biggest issues that all employers have right now is the retention of staff, um, eh, and hiring new people. There just isn't a, a talent pool out there that is either willing to work or able to work or, uh, wanting to work. With the, the operating budget, I'm gonna look at this in a different manner than I've looked at budgets in the past. I wanna see how this budget achieves certain goals, and those goals are staff retention, staff recognition, putting Muskego in a position where we're a desirable candidate for hiring people. We want the best and the brightest. We wanna retain the best and the brightest. So as we look at this budget, ask the question, does this budget achieve those goals? If we look through the budget, and every budget's got fluff in it, um, let's look at the fluff, and if we can turn that fluff into something that retains employees or creates a, a, a better atmosphere for us, let's do that. So with that, as, as the budget, I think we're, we're gonna see the budget this week or next week, I'm assuming, two weeks, but we'll have it in advance, so, um, please study the budget and ask yourself those questions. How can that budget achieve the goals that we need to achieve for our most important asset?
Thank you. Any other communications or miscellaneous business? Motion to adjourn would be in order?
Second?
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Committee holds, adjourned at six-twenty-five.